Bailey. She was scheduled to come back anyway. Right. Yeah, Jackson is doing Oktoberfest down in St. Louis. So.
Oh, what? I know.
We're going to have to separate which ones are working.
Well, I'll let you. I'll start the meeting and then I'll do it. Just so it's online, it's live.
Okay.
We're almost there. Good evening. Today is September 19th, 2017. This is the committee, the whole meeting. Normally, we start here, but since we have so many people that are so anxious to come to a town meeting, I'm going to come around to that side. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. So just so that we can go over how this will proceed tonight, we have three things on the agenda tonight. First are the townhomes on the Dominick's property, and we have three gentlemen here who are going to give us a presentation. Then we have a, well, the discussion on the flagpole, and then we have a discussion on the budget. Now, the way the process works is the presentation will be given, the council will be able to ask questions. After the council, those of you who have signed in from the sheet will be able to come up to the podium and give your comments. Now, it's a total of five minutes, 20 minutes total. I'm willing to sort of stretch it as long as folks will sort of abide and respect the next person. I mean, if we have six people that want to speak, if you could just keep it like to two or three minutes, then we can get everybody in there. And the same procedure will be followed when we talk about the flagpole and the budget. And then on the first item here, tonight is just an information. They are going to be going to give us a presentation on their concept. Nothing will be done. There's a process that goes on. They will decide after tonight's comments and feedback, yes, they'd like to go forward, or no, they would not like to go forward. And even if the process does go forward, there's still zoning and appeals before the council. On the second item, we're here to discuss in ordinance in regard to the flagpole. Now, in regard to the budget, which is the third item, each one of the council members behind me have been meeting with staff in meetings ahead of time. So tonight is sort of what was referred to as the first bite of the apple. Nothing is in stone. We're here to discuss the budget with your ideas, and then the council will give direction to staff to move forward with changes or things that they like, or they will just leave it the way it is. So, thank you all for coming tonight. I just wanted to give you all the ground rules. Those of you that are in the audience at home, now you're all up to date, so thank you. Mr. Comstock, I believe you begin.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, we have a few slides. They are in the presentation and the packet that's before you. And obviously, before we call up Andrew Mao, who's the general manager for land for Ryan Homes, and Scott Shelton, Ryan Homes Regional Market Land Manager, I just want to go through some of the pieces. And again, this is the newest concept that deals with the former Dominick's property. Ryan Homes is here to hear from the city council and obviously the public about the concept and spend, before they actually start spending money and engineering and all the other pieces. And this goes back to the last concept that was here. You know, you're talking almost a half a million dollars, and that one went away. But again, before Ryan really starts on this whole engineering and everything else, we want some feedback in overall. Over in this picture, in the concept, which is called Towns of Meadows Square, the front section is left open at 1.4 acres, I'm rounding a little bit, for really commercial. The next part is stormwater retention for the entire property that we were talking about. It's also a buffer between the commercial that's still owned by Clark Street Development. And then Ryan Homes actually has a contract for the property, and that's 120 row homes in two different kind of variations. You can see some of the larger ones in the back, and I'll let Andrew and Scott talk about that a little bit. But again, this is a concept, and I do appreciate Andrew numerous times coming and talking to me. So he would go to Lexington, see about visitor parking, and he actually looked at some of the garages and giving a little more flow in this concept, so hopefully this will actually work and be beneficial. But it does take the entire property into it. And again, there are no rental or in this property for all this. This is all row homes that start about $300,000. Obviously, the other concept, they go for a little bit more. Now, for the 1.4 acres that's actually left for commercial retail, in this picture, it shows you about .7 and .73 left open. There are no bidders, or there are no people at this point in time talking to Clark Street for that open section. Now, the other part that I want to show you is just what the concept would look like. Now, Ryan Homes is currently building in Displanes. It's a little bit different. Ryan Homes builds homes, and these row homes, actually, you walk through the front door, and then you start with staircases. It's not like Lexington that your first thing that you're going up to are the staircases. So it has a little different look. They do, and I'll let Andrew explain this a little more, but they do use a lot more brick. Colors can change, and obviously, some of the pieces. This is the back or the side, I should say, of what the property would actually look like. And then the backs with, or the fronts, depending if it's a front-loaded row home with the garages and how you pull into those. And then obviously, one more picture of just how some of the other pieces would look like with a garage and everything else like that. So this would be a multi-year development for all 120 homes. And again, before I turn it over to Andrew and Scott to do a little bit more and actually be here if there are some questions, obviously, the city council knows, and obviously Economic Development Committee has heard from me in the past, but according to August 19th information that we had from Lexington, they have nine homes on the market, not including the three models. They have five homes under contract, and 37 have closed out of that 54 that are actually in that production. So with that, I actually turn this over to Andrew and Scott. At any point that they want me to turn back to any picture, I'd be happy to it, but I'm going back to the concept, just so any of those first initial conversations would actually be in there. So I turn it over to Scott.
Thank you very much. You did such a good job. Any questions? No, thank you, Mayor Alderman. Thank you for the opportunity to get feedback tonight. My name is Scott Shelton with Ryan Homes, my colleague Andrew Mao, and Brendan Dolan, who's from Clark Street Development, here tonight to talk a little bit about the project. I'm going to spend just a couple of minutes talking about who Ryan Homes is, and Brendan's going to give a little bit of history on the property from Clark Street, and then I'm going to ask Andrew to come up and do a brief overview of the plan and elaborate just a little bit more than what Barry indicated. So Ryan Homes is a public home builder. It's the brand name that we build under. We are under the parent company of NVR. We are the fourth-largest builder in the country. We built about 16,000 houses in 2016, really from Chicago East is really our footprint. So we do a lot in Washington, D.C., Maryland, et cetera. So we have a lot of experience in building houses, actually attached houses, townhomes such as these for sale. It's a large percentage of our company's portfolio, probably close to 35 to 40% of what we do across the various footprints are attached townhomes. We currently build about 200 houses in the local Chicago area. We've been in this market since about 2010, 2011, and have built in a variety of locations around the metropolitan area, currently active or grand opening in about seven communities in the greater Chicago area, with members of our management team that have been in this market for quite some time, even with builders prior to, with other builders prior to NVR coming into this market. So we're really excited about the prospect of building here. You know, Rolling Meadows is a place that we think is a friendly, reputable community, great schools, great transportation access, and a place that we'd like to be a partner with the community for a number of years. So with that, I'm going to ask Brendan just to come up and talk just real briefly about the history of the property, of which we're the contract purchaser of.
Good evening. It probably goes without introduction what property we're talking about, and you're all familiar. It used to be a 133,000 square foot, oh, sorry, 133,000 square foot shopping center, 72,000 square feet of which used to be anchor space. In 2004, the anchor closed, so that's about the time you started seeing most of the vacancy. And then it was fully vacant starting in 2013 or thereabouts. In 2006, the contract purchaser of the property, Bristol Moran LLC, had successfully rezoned the property from C2 to R3 designation and acquired approval from the city council for 233 apartment homes, 42 row houses, and 32 age-bracketed townhomes with some ancillary retail. However, the contract fell through and the PUD expired. Fast forward a few years until 2011, that's when Clark Street, my company, purchased the first mortgage note on the company. And then in 2012, a year later, we obtained title via foreclosure. At that same time in 2012, we had a LOI with Uncle Joe's, which was a grocer of the Joseph Caputo family. And we had the LOI signed and were moving towards a lease when unfortunately Uncle Joe's pulled out, and we found out, you know, a few years later, they were struggling. They ended up going bankrupt. From August 2012 to June 2015, we tried and tried to fill the space with anchor and junior anchor tenants. However, we were unsuccessful, and that's when we turned to Colliers International to market the property for sale. They spent six months scouring the market, and they came back with four types of interested buyers. There were townhomes, they were garden-style apartments, memory care, and senior living. And then with discussion from city staff, we decided to move forward with the South Bay development. As you all are aware, this past August, the city council rejected that proposal. So in January, we went back to Colliers again, and after, again, a conversation with city staff, we have elected to go forward with NVR. Thank you.
Thanks, Brendan. Just wanted to give, Barry did a great introduction of the property. Wanted to give a few highlights. As he said, it's 120 units. We've got two product types. One of the feedback we got was, don't make it monotonous. You know, create some interest in the property. So one of the things we did was we, we've got a couple of different product lines. So you've got the rear-loaded product, and then we've also got a front-loaded product. It not only creates a little diversity in it, it also creates some, it creates a different market. The three-story is a very vertical product, a lot of stairs. Two-story, you know, for empty nesters, or even, you know, somebody who just wants to, you know, wants a more traditional style, they're able to, able to, you know, have less stairs. You're walking out of your garage and you're, you know, walking straight into your kitchen-type environment. So these are, as Barry said, these are all for-sale units. We don't build rental. So we will be selling and marketing professional staff seven days a week, you know, with a professional marketing, professional sales associates that, you know, work for us. That's, we do that in all of our communities. The, one of the things you'll notice, we're providing detention on this site. Currently, this site has no detention, 100% impervious surface, so any water that falls on the site flowing straight downstream. So this detention basin will capture any water, reduce the runoff, slow it down to help the overall area as well. We've gone through several renditions of this plan in working with staff. We've had some preliminary meetings with a few of the trustees, or I'm sorry, a few of the aldermen, and we've moved it to the north end of the property in between. For as we, our engineers started really digging in and, you know, we started some of the preliminary engineering work, we found that there's a high point on the south end of the property, and it just couldn't make it work with the engineer, or with the detention on the south end. So we've had to move it into the north end. Provides a nice buffer between the commercial and the residential, but that's, so that's how we ended up with it there. But again, the key there is it's going to improve the overall area just by, you know, reducing the runoff. You know, we've, our garage, our garage-to-garage distance, we, you know, we heard some concerns about Lexington is just a little tight. So we've got an additional five feet, which may not sound like much, but every five feet, you know, matters. So we're, you know, 40 feet garage-to-garage where they're 35. So we've tried to take that into account. These are all three-bedroom units, so they're, Barry, if you could go to the next slide. So they're 1600 to 1900 square foot, all three-bedroom. You'll see, you know, variety of brick. We've got some, we try and articulate our units to really create some interest, some visual interest, avoid that blank wall, even on the front and the back. You know, you'll see some box bays, covered entries, some shed dormers, you know, different roof pitches on the units. Try to, try and create an attractive product. Barry's talked about the entry on that first floor, so you walk in, you're walking into a living or into a family room area, and then you have stairs, you know, and then your garage behind that, stairs going up to the main living area. I walked our model in Displanes the other day. That first floor is incredible. It's got, you know, kitchen, a big, great room. And then up on the third floor is your, is your bedrooms, three bedrooms, two bath. Then if Barry can, so side elevation, and then we've got, you know, some rear elevations. Every unit has a deck, and you'll see that break in the, you know, two-foot break in between the units. And then one more. So and this is a two-story, and I think our slides have gotten a little distorted. Alderman, I think you're, I see that you're looking at a little more true rendition, but it's, you'll see the traditional two-story, first floor is garage, family room, or I'm sorry, living room, dining area, and kitchen. And upstairs, you've got your three bedrooms, two bath, and these units would have a basement. I think, and then going back, Barry touched on the commercial, so Clark Street is going to retain the one and a half acres of commercial, and, you know, we're going to work with our engineers and city councils on traffic, detention, all the typical site improvements that are required. So I appreciate, I look forward to hearing your feedback that you have, and we'll answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Did you wish to make another comment, or?
No. I just wanted to question.
Barry, are we open for questions?
You're open. You're open.
Okay. Do we have questions for the council?
No questions, Mr. Mayor, but I do have a letter, so I don't know when that's appropriate for discussion.
Okay. If that's, you wish to read, then go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a letter that I have drafted because the comments, questions, and conversation around concerns regarding what was listed in the agenda, the agenda item as downtown property discussion. And so I hope that this is comprehensive and it'll keep the conversation moving in the right direction. And because we knew Ryan Homes would be providing this presentation this evening on what their proposed development would bring by way of opportunity and value, or put another way, revenue and growth, I thought to myself, how do I answer the residents who also like to know if we pursue this project to develop homes in the area, what opportunity and value might we be sacrificing, meaning diminishing value and additional financial burdens? See, once you build housing here, there can never change back to commercial use. The cost to demolish would be too high, and the burden would be too large. The future will always provide for the option to adjust course to the use of this property for residential real estate should developing the area commercially not work out. Since I don't know the answers, I sought insight from academia to relay clear, unbiased perspective on information about the overall economics of the issue. So I contacted Harper College Economics Department and spoke with the department head, Dr. Bregashaw, by explaining my desire to get a basic understanding on what is more valuable in the most general sense, an acre of commercial property versus an acre of residential land in a community, and what's best for the community's long-term viability. In fact, he chuckled slightly while letting me know this was his entire doctoral thesis, focused similarly on my question as it explored land use, population distribution, expenditures, and local governments for the state of Michigan. Needless to say, we met immediately at his convenience, and the following points are what I took away from the conversation that we drilled down into while exploring at a community level. First, assessing the big picture, then getting granular. States with a larger ratio of commercial to residential property are more financially successful than states with a larger ratio of residential property. That's because the tax base of commercial properties are much higher than the tax base of residential properties. Knowing this truth, one could extrapolate that a community with a larger commercial ratio than residential is more prosperous, both financially and economically, leading to long-term sustainable viability. In our community, there is currently a surplus of supply, housing, thusly suppressing the real estate value of homes that are still underwater, which is essentially driving residents further from the community and the state. Even with new regulations or tighter regulations, lenders are still apprehensive to loan money without putting the borrower through arduous hurdles. They, the borrower, cannot earn less than one-third the assessed value of a home they're looking to buy. Simply, if a home is $3,000, $300,000, the borrower must earn $100,000 to even get on the radar to run that lending gauntlet. Did you know the median annual household income in Rolling Meadows is just under $58,000? These townhomes are beginning at about $300,000, which is completely out of line with the average home earnings or value of the homes in Rolling Meadows in the immediate geographic location as they would be assessed. But we cannot forget about competition as well. There's a proposal to build 2,700 homes of differing types in Schaumburg right on our border. This will impact our schools, our community, and our finances. This is where I'd like to move from revenues that may potentially gain from building more homes to the cost of adding additional housing and people by way of focusing on expenditures. If additional homes and bodies are brought in to contribute to the overall financial pool, this does not necessarily indicate their financial contribution to our community or county will be enough to provide proportionate revenues needed to pay for an increase in schools, police, fire, and other institutions related to these areas, which the city will need to fund as a result of this influx of people and homes. Data from our fire station study has already indicated where ambulatory needs are. They are, and this is an approximate. North to St. James, south to Central Road, east to Wilkie, and west to Hicks, essentially outlining a greater downtown area. So while we look to add homes and people to an area already in need of most ambulatory services, we're also looking to relocate the fire station away from the current location where they respond to these calls. So before we throw a towel in an area that hasn't already been given a fair amount of time to redevelop in line with changing economic trends into a viable commercial space, it's important to be an informed person, an informed consumer, and have a basic understanding of the economic state of real estate in the area and surrounding suburbs, much like Dr. Bregashaw. Dr. Bregashaw is the economist who cleared the misconception about which attracts which. The economic riddle surrounding people or commerce? Commerce attracts people, not the other way around. Commerce also increases property values, generating desirability for future business and residents. Rolling Meadows can easily, by location alone, attract business in this area, and anyone who is in favor of making data-driven decisions must put personal emotion aside, acknowledge the empirical data, and move forward with the fact that this is in the best interest of the community and city to utilize the majority of this property for commercial property as it was intended to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Any other, any other comments before I open it up to the public? Mr. Banjer?
Thank you. I had sat down with the developers several weeks ago to just get a sneak peek at this, and as you may know, I was all for South Bay coming in here because that's what the market was heading towards. We sent them packing, so this actually was kind of surprised me, coming in so quickly. And once again, if these fellows have figured out this is what the market's wanting, I mean, Lexington Homes right down the street here is a good example of those guys nailing it because those units are, they developed it ahead of schedule, and they're almost all sold. So I don't say any, any thing stopping these from following their path. You know, Alderman, Gallo talks about the doctor from Harper and his analysis, and that's, I guess, an economic analysis. I guess my question to him would be, come into a microanalysis of this 11 acres that sat there for years and years and years. You talk about giving an area a fair amount of time to develop, and I would say, you know, just on this fellow's timeline, as he spelled it out behind me, this has had years and years and years to develop, and every year that it didn't develop was deteriorating structures, diminishing property taxes, and then finally, the, you know, the demolition of the, of the building on the property. So I'm, I'm all for this. I'm kind of excited something's going to be there. We drove way north this weekend on a little trip to Spring Grove, and I went through Lake Zurich, which has probably a quarter mile of strip malls that are abandoned. And, you know, every article we read is yet another chain closing, and, you know, something sounding the death knell of retail. And I don't need to go in into it further because it's plain to see that that's never going to come back. It hasn't in the past decade, and I think it's, I think it's proactive on our part to just turn over and get something in there. And this, this looks like a move forward to me, not a step backward, and not something where it's going to be, you know, kicking ourselves years from now and saying, well, we could have had a factory in there. So I'm, I'm excited about this. It's got a lot, a lot more ways to go, but just looking at it, I... We drove way north this weekend on a little trip to Spring Grove and I went through Lake Zurich, which has probably a quarter mile of strip malls that are abandoned. And, you know, every article we read is yet another chain closing and, you know, something sounding the death knell of retail. And I don't need to go in, into it further because it's plain to see that that's never going to come back. It hasn't in the past decade. And I think it's, I think it's proactive on our part to just turn over and get something in there. And this, this looks like a move forward to me, not a step backward and not something where it's, it's going to be, you know, kicking ourselves years from now and saying, well, we could have had a factory in there. So I'm, I'm excited about this. It's got a lot, a lot more ways to go, but just looking at it, I, once again, I'm, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else before? I'll open it up to the audience and then we'll have a chance to recap on the council after comments here. This is?
No, I moved my glasses. Sorry.
The council meeting is now open to members of the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are not on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that the person wishing to address the city council or keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor and may not be used in any form. First, the first sign in and it's, I guess the pen. Arnett Sazran? I'm sorry if I said that wrong. Yes?
Annette.
But, Annette, I'm sorry, the pen, looks like it ran out. Annette, please forgive me. We'll get you a better pen next time. Thank you.
First, I'd like to say thanks for taking on the task of being our council members. It's not an easy job.
Um, Annette, just pull the mic down, please. Thank you. Thank you, Annette.
But unfortunately, most of you have little or no connection with your constituents. Additionally, some of your thinking is still stuck in years behind. Much of the time, we hear what's going on in Rolling Meadows from rumors, a little from newspapers and less from the city newsletter and practically nothing from, directly from our aldermen. So I'd like to address a few issues and if my information is wrong, I apologize in advance, but please enlighten me. First of all, I want to talk about the firehouse relocation. I understand that the...
Annette, we're, we're just discussing the Dominics property.
Okay.
I understand that's another, that's another issue, but for tonight...
Okay.
We're doing that.
I hear that the Clark Development is proposing $400,000 townhomes on the Dominics property, which will require rezoning. Come on, aren't there enough empty properties along Kirchhoff Road, not just the Lexington, but throughout our downtown area? Clark seems to be inadequate and inefficient realtor and they can't seem to market to commercial venues or they don't have the expertise for it. Tons of ideas surfaced during the South Bay proposal. Perhaps it's time for Clark to reach out and explore a few of them. Perhaps they have not, perhaps they have not had time to reach out and explore a few of them. Perhaps they have to know where our marketing is, but we, the citizens don't know any of these things unless it comes to a proposal. I'd like for them to explore a movie complex like AMX or Cineplex, not just one theater, but several. Our new mayor, I heard, was said to say the area is going to be marketed as a location destination. What does that mean? Remember, it might be easy to change zoning, but once changed to residential, all chances of commercial will be lost forever. We get that residential will increase revenue to the city, but Clark needs to attempt doing a better job of marketing to commercial property seekers. The vacant Dominics property has been a hot issue for many years now. The council might feel something there is better than nothing. Please, don't take that attitude. We have a long future ahead of Rolling Meadows. Stop thinking backwards and look to the future with fresh eyes and thoughts, just like Mr. Gallo's report told us. Once you change it to residential, it won't come back as commercial. We do need the right fit for Rolling Meadows' future, not what you thought it should have been years ago. This is an opportunity for our alderman to show some forward strategic thinking and planning for the betterment of Rolling Meadows and its future generations, not just ours, not just yours, but our children's children. If you think this is a lovely proposal, take a ride to Roselle Road and Schaumburg Road and look at those three stories of townhouses that are so congested on that land spot, it looks hideous. Just take a little ride over there and you, your opinion, I think, will change very quickly. We want economic growth, that is true, but we need the right fit for the right area and not that one.
Thank you for your comments. Carol Allen. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me. Welcome, or thank you for letting me, um, thank you for letting me speak as well. I understand businesses leaving Rolling Meadows, it's leaving Illinois. Big Box is, is going, it's going more to online and things like that. What worries me is with Schaumburg putting in 27 new developments, how will we make sure we're not sitting with a bunch of empty new townhomes? We can't, as Mr. Gallo alluded to with his research with Harper, we can't then convert it back to a store. I don't think building-wise it would be, even be allowed. Has the, will the council, has the council gonna, is, are they going to be able to entertain all of that coming through? Does it have to be such a giant structure? There's a lot of homes there competing with these homes that's argumentatively cut it in half where the 1,300 Schaumburg new places come in, well, say, I don't know, half of these add another 3,000 kids to the school plan? I mean, is that possible if we cut everything in half? Our schools can't hold that. Our property taxes then now become affected because now we're talking fire station, $9 million. Now we have to figure out, do we have to have that referendum come back from District 15 because Schaumburg is throwing those kids on us? And then the other question I did have for the Ryan Holmes is, can they be rented? And if they can be rented, what percent and who will manage that so that we don't end up with a bunch of slums? Like unfortunately, we do have, I live by East Park Apartments, there's police there pretty much every night. I don't want to see that in our downtown. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other, no other comments from the council? Mr. Grumstock, what's the next step then?
The, obviously the next step would be if council, again, this is a presentation, discussion, review and comment, I think that obviously what has been stated and obviously what's going forward at this point in time, Ryan has done their unveiling, they're in the process and I guess that what residents have made the comment, obviously Ryan Holmes has heard this, but if they continue on the process, like we said, it would have to be rezoned back into it, so it would have to still go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and then it would still be back at the city council. And I think, obviously with preliminary discussions with Ryan Holmes, it's roughly a November date that they would be moving ahead with this and back. And then if it passed through Planning and Zoning and then got city council approval, then it would be a 2018 project. So at this point in time, unless the council has more feedback, it's really back into Ryan's home to decide if they want to move ahead and also make sure that, obviously what they've heard and continue on the process. But at this point in time, it's really back to the council if you want to give them more feedback. But again, this was the idea to release the concept, to make sure that people understood about the 1.4 acres of commercial and 120 rural homes, front-loaded and back-loaded, two different things. So that would be it at this point in time unless the council has anything else because it does not have any straw votes that are needed or anything else.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grumstock. If there's no other comments, I will, do you have comments?
I will have to say a comment, sure. I believe Dominics closed in 2003. And for nine years, the city had their hands tied because Dominics continued to pay a lease. So let's just scratch those nine years off. So that brings us up to like 2012-ish. And I think around 2017-ish. And that's five years. And I heard, for, for more than five years, I heard, what is the city doing about this? What are we doing about this? What are we doing about this? And a couple of projects have come and gone and all I heard was, we need more commercial. And I'm looking at this and I'm seeing a really good plan. I'm seeing that there is commercial still available and there has been commercial here available for five years. I have to tell you, Ryan developers, I am 100% in favor of this project. I think this is an outstanding project. I don't think it looks overbuilt to me. I was in Displanes and I saw your project there and the homes looked wonderful. I think these homes are priced less than Lexington and Lexington is two years ahead of schedule, I believe. And they've got, like, would you say, Barry, nine left to sell out of 50-something?
About.
Yeah, there's, again, it's nine homes on the market and including three models.
Okay, so 12 out of 54. So they've, they've gotten rid of 37 or 38 homes already. And, and they're more expensive than these, which counterdicks, whatever, you need so much money. We're bringing new people into the city. And I think that's always a good thing. So I am going to tell Ryan that they have my vote to move ahead on this. I'm fully supporting this. I think this looks like a great project because it gives our people, our residents, more options, more opportunities and it still gives us commercial, which is what people had told me for so many years, we need not to lose. So I'm all in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. DeJesus. Any other comments? Mr., Ms. Vanjakis?
Oh.
Okay, help yourself.
Sorry. Can I, can I ask Clark Street a question regarding the commercial part?
Scale, please.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then if you can't answer this, I understand, it's kind of thrown out at you. Okay, so there's two, there would be two commercial spots, each 0.73 acres of land, correct?
Correct.
So these would be, then you would, you would be marketing these?
Yes.
Okay. And this, marketing them with the idea of what, that possibly a restaurant on each one or strip center or what, what would the idea be or what would you, what would you turn away? I mean, with a gas station?
I mean, we're open to anything. We've, we, when we went out to the community for, or went out to the retail world for the past five years, we went out to every single user you could think imaginable. Unfortunately, even though we were coming out of this recession, we just couldn't find anything and get it to pencil. And we love the product that Ryan has put forth. To your point, the, the way it's drawn up right now, those are two out parcel lots, something similar to like a, a restaurant. You could do like a credit union there, whatever.
No, no more things.
Or you could do like one strip center between the two. I think, I don't know, that would have to be a discussion and take a look into community members' thoughts and whatnot, but at the end of the day, yeah, those are the two competing ideas.
Okay, just trying to get a feel for what your thoughts were. Thank you.
Yep.
And to piggyback on the scale of those parcels, if I could, please, to put it in perspective for me to help me spatially and dimensionally, are those in the drawing accurate to, to scale proposed right here? Do we, do we know that?
If you print out the original, it is to scale.
Okay.
So it's, it, one to, I think it's one to 100 scale on 11 by 17.
So with a little bit of distortion, I'm having some slight difficulty putting something around it as if this could be maybe three more of what's existing on the corner there, which is a Taco Bell? Is that about the size or equivocal space that fits there?
So typically what we find with commercial space is that, you know, even in the city, you're looking at just under an acre site, which, you know, this is three-quarters of one each. And then you're able to satisfy the drive-through requirements as well as all the parking. So this would, I mean, I think this is a conservative, too. Three would be tight, but, you know, if the market's there and obviously we've heard how much commercial is important to everybody in the community, maybe. I can't make any promises, but it's kind of my initial feedback.
Sure, thank you.
Well, Miguel, I think to answer your question, it's about three times the size of the Taco Bell site, that those two sites combined.
Yep. Okay. So I believe, Mr. Mayor, that with the myopic view of just considering strip malls and single point of destination retail, that it is important and imperative that we focus on long-term assessment for economic viability and listen to subject matter experts and economists that understand that what drives the future of a community is commerce and not necessarily commercial spot up in front of housing. And then to make sure that those who want to be here in the future can either retire here and remain satisfied in what they built and those who are leaving shouldn't leave these decisions up to, you know, light matters.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. I'm sorry. Mr. Gal, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the last six years, I've sat in this council and this has been a sort, a sore subject for all those six years with people coming forth with many different ideas and opinions. Clark, Clark Street stepped in and jeopardized a lot of their money to come in and try to develop this property. People may or may not like them. Most people in the Midwest that are in the development business have nothing but respect for their company. They're a solid grade A company. They try to do their best to market this. I think of anybody sitting in this room, I think the gentleman from Clark probably would like to have developed this more than anybody here four or five years ago. I can't speak for them, but that's just a guess. So I guess I, I'm a little frustrated when I hear people say that they don't know what they're doing. They're a major developer, they've developed properties all over the, this area and the rest of Chicagoland. So I think it's unfair to blanket say that they are not doing a very good job. I think many retailers came in and looked at it and figured out it just wasn't rent for them. I guess for people who, who don't keep up on the daily news today, Toys R Us filed bankruptcy today. So that their 1,600 stores will become a lot less real soon. And it just, it's really hard to get people who want to build bricks and mortar in a commercial setting. I think people have had a chance to come in and look at it. I think the Clark Street people have bought a lot of different people in here. Other people have looked at it, even not through Clark, they just didn't see it as a real viable alternative. I can't speak for everybody sitting in the room, but I'm guessing there's a lot of people sitting in the audience today that would like to see a bakery, a small store, a bike shop, whatever. They're just not going to happen. I mean, we have to be realistic on what's available in going forward. Why, I appreciate the professor at Harper giving us all kinds of advice of what we should or shouldn't do. You know, Clark Street put their money where their mouth was. And I think that they've come back, first with South Bay, some of us didn't particularly like that as a thought. So they, they moved on and then this seems to be a reasonable option. I'm not sure everybody likes it and I understand that, but I think it should help real estate values in all of Rolling Meadows by having nicer, more expensive homes here. It should help our tax base. It should make the other properties downtown that are vacant now more viable for smaller retailers to come in and actually have a more vibrant community to buy from. So I think that there's, this offers a lot of opportunities. Is it Nirvana? No, I don't think so. I don't think Clark or Ryan come in and say that, but they're a reputable company that builds properties around the Midwest and around the East Coast. They've done a great job. You can see what they've done in other communities. So I would just express my, my, my position is for this. And I guess I would ask Mr. Mayor, in light of the fact that these fellows may or may not want to go forward, I would encourage us to do some kind of a straw poll so they're either encouraged or discouraged from going forward. Thank you.
Well, I think tonight was more of a information opportunity of where, and so they can go home and digest because they have more, they're going to have to do with coming forward to the, I mean, Planning and Zoning Commission before this. So that's, you know, their opportunity and it was meant for tonight just to be an information opportunity.
I think with all, we appreciate that comment. Thank you. You know, we, we are encouraged to do... You know, we are encouraged to do this development. I realize there's been a lot of discussion over the years here and appreciate the opinions of everyone. We really would appreciate if that could occur, because we are about to embark on a multi-hundred thousand dollar spend to take it to the next level of planning and engineering. We've heard from most of you, but if we had the opportunity to hear from everyone, that really, we would really appreciate that opportunity.
I guess we're taking a straw poll. So, and I gather we'll, I'll phrase it that of those who would like to see this project move forward, please raise your hand.
I'm.
Four. And those against?
Was your hand up or not?
No, it was. I wasn't. I'm not ready to make it up.
And those against?
So I think you have the fourth there.
Fourth. And we're ready to move on.
Yes, we're actually on, we're actually on.
Gentlemen, I want to thank you, and we'll give you a few minutes, because I know you really like to stick around the last couple of hours. It could be even more fun, so.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Mr. Comstock, I guess you're going to lead this one off also.
Yeah, there's no PowerPoint for this one. But I do have two sets of information to send out to each of the aldermen after I do this quick presentation. This folder actually has a petition for support of this project. The color folders with, has additional information plus a petition against the flag antenna at Campbell Hill Park, but I will distribute everything when we have, there's more information in there. This item is in because of informational at this time, but it's also an opportunity for the council. Yes, I do have. But this is actually in for the city council to discuss. If you want to look at the city code, if you want to look at any direction to staff, I would put this out here because it is informational, because for the last three weeks, between aldermen and between staff, there's been a lot of discussion from residents on this, and it's got its own little life on it, which is good, because feedback is always good. It's just when it's constructive feedback, that's a good thing. When it's passionate, that's also good, but when it becomes personal and other comments are stated, that is not appropriate. But with this being a discussion for informational, I do want to get information out there for people. So over about two years, the park district has talked about this off and on. There have been six meetings on the project. All of those were posted. So again, we're posting happens is obviously at the park district. A reminder that the park district is not the city of Rolling Meadows. For the city of Rolling Meadows, you're actually serviced by four different park districts, depending on where you live. But at the same point in time, they're a completely different taxing body. The only way that, if they were to become part of the city of Rolling Meadows or a department, would be a referendum, and then it has to be consolidation. And I know that in the state of Illinois, you've got people who want consolidation, but that's not what we're here for. Now, the difference that people talk about taxing bodies is the library, and everybody at the council has heard me say this, and I know that you've heard me say this numerous times, the library is like our baby brother. We know what's going on there. We have a liaison from the city council. We obviously know when their agenda's out there. Staff is over there a lot. Obviously, Finance Director Melissa Gallagher is there almost every month doing their financials, and we have their audits. So a completely different relationship. So this flag antenna has been discussed. Obviously, when the park district felt comfortable, they had a contract with the overall provider who's needing this coverage. It needed to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Rolling Meadows. At September 5th, the Planning and Zoning Commission had the discussion about it. Per rules, obviously, individuals living within a certain boundary away from where this property is located that was going to be affected had to be noticed, and they did receive notification of this discussion. Now, obviously, this is a special use that they were asking for, to go from 75 feet to 110 feet. Now, obviously, in the packet, all of you have pictures of what a flag antenna would actually look like. These are real pictures, and I do thank Executive Director Amy Charlesworth for sending those pictures, so everybody could see what a flag antenna actually looks like. At that hearing, and again, the Planning and Zoning has a negative recommendation to the city council that will be coming forth to you shortly, unless the petitioner pulls it, but that's a different discussion. They have a negative recommendation to the city council. However, we're also now led to believe that Verizon will probably be coming back with the 75-foot antenna for that location per the thing. Now, with this flag pole, and you can see from the pictures and what was discussed at the Planning and Zoning, there's actually a fenced area. It's adjacent to the existing garage and the community garden. It's going to make the garden grow much better. But at the same point in time, there's a small generator. During the Planning and Commission meeting with the zoning and everything else, it was stated there will be a hum, but it's a very small hum, just like any other generator. So what's before you is the discussion, but it's also to make sure that some of the communication is actually out there. From the city's understanding, and again, going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and what staff has been told, there still needs to be obtained access easements for ingress and egress for the communication tower site from the owners of the adjacent Rolling Meadows Shopping Center. We do not know if that's been completed. So the final comment that I have before I turn this over, Verizon did approach the city of Rolling Meadows some time ago. They wanted to be on the water tower. The water tower cannot structurally hold another antenna. It's maxed out what's actually sitting in there. The water tower that you actually see out on Campbell Road is 130 feet, and then you obviously put more if you have antennas on it. So with that, I know it's a lot of information out there. We're communicating. My final comments would be the same thing that many of you have heard me say before. Communication is great when it's constructive. It's a passionate conversation. When you make it personal or you make it into something else, that's not productive. The final comment that I would say again, they could come back with the 75-foot at this point in time. And obviously, City Attorney Jim McCall, we've had some discussions, and I know that aldermen have conversations about it. Our code has issues, and I know from residents, you've been very vocal about our code, but at the same point in time, there's no gray and there's no points that we can bring things back. That's why we're before the city council for the direction and some of the information to make sure that it's out there. And I do appreciate very greatly the residents who are sitting behind me, positive and negative. And I hope that everybody who comes up, please keep it civil, but at the same point in time, and again, it's another discussion that will be coming up at a later date. So with that, that's my intro. I know it's a little more wordy than many people used to get from me. Part of it is also residents taking some shots at the city, and it's not a city item per se. But I'm going to distribute these. You have both groups. I hope that everybody looks through everything at that point in time. And with that, that's the intro that I have for this item.
So do, do members of the council have questions or thoughts?
Yeah, Ginny does give.
Each one?
Two.
Both?
Two.
Yeah. I get.
Let's take more with the shareholders.
Barry, do you have the originals?
These are all originals that I gave.
Okay.
Ginny has the one for the city.
Does anyone on the council have comments at this time? Otherwise, I'll open the meeting up for the residents.
I, thank you. I will have comments, but I'd like to reserve them until after the residents have spoken.
Thank you. Okay. The council meeting is now, I'm going to read it again, open for the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor, and they may not be used in any form. There are nine individuals who have signed up for the cell tower, as I've asked earlier if you could keep comments. That would be appreciated under the, you know, because I will have to call time, and I'm hoping to get everybody else in there. So the first person on the agenda is Donna Bessisi. Thank you for coming forward today.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and City Staff, as well as the residents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight regarding the Kimball Hill Cell Tower project. My name is Donna Bessisi, and I'm the President of the Park Board of Commissioners. Central State's Towers approached the park district in July of 2015 due to the need for better cell service in Rolling Meadows. They came to us because there was no space, as was mentioned, on the additional antenna at the water tower, which is currently in Florrie Park. While the Central State's Towers team is responsible for obtaining the permits and was, and has requested the variance from the allowable 75-foot tower, the park district wanted to come to you to clarify that we do already have an agreement in place with Central State's Towers. Over the course of two years, the park board considered the positive impact that a non-tax revenue stream would have on operations. We wanted to make sure that we developed the project to keep the beautification of our park in mind, and we wanted to maintain control over the structure and design of the tower. The park board and staff have been very aggressive in seeking grants, donations, and other forms of revenue that have made a significant impact on our overall operations. When we were approached by Central State's Towers with this new source of revenue utilizing a small, underdeveloped section of the park next to a storage shed, we felt that not only could we earn revenue to support our budget, but also we could beautify the area at the same time. The board considered the towers that exist in the community and determined that they were not right for the park setting, the existing towers. The park board had the opportunity to put up a 70-foot tower that would hold many antennas, as we've seen in other parts of our town, and possibly earn more revenue, but thought it would be unsightly and opted not to. The board was shown options for a stealth tower, and it was unanimously agreed that a flag would be the best option for this park. To give you some perspective, the water tower at Florrie Park is approximately 130 feet, and the 10 ball field lights at Kimball Hill Park are 68 feet. So we're talking about the difference between a 75-foot tower and 110-foot tower. The park board takes the beautification of the parks very seriously. In the past three to four years, we have spent thousands of dollars in Kimball Hill Park with our pure improvement, tree planting, waterfall repairs, and the purchase of the amphitheater that will soon be coming in the fall. In closing, I would just like to add that having additional non-tax revenue allows us to continue to improve all of our parks, facilities, and services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person on the sign-up sheet is Kathleen Grooak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Grooak, and I am a representative of Central State's Towers and Verizon. Is this better? Thanks. And I just wanted to come, I thank Donna for the nice presentation. I just wanted to come and answer any questions that you might have for me regarding this tower.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person up is Jim Roberts.
I have one question for Kathleen.
Okay, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts. I'm sorry. You need to read your statement to the council.
Oh, I can't ask her a question?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry.
Thank you.
Broke the rules already. It didn't take long. It's like grade school. I just wanted to make a note that in the colored folders on the petitions that were signed against the tower, a lot of those names were collected at one of the marquee events down at the park, the Rock in the Park. My wife and my neighbor Robin went down there, and within about an hour and a half, they came up with about 70 signatures against it. A lot of people who attend the park don't even live in Rolling Meadows, but they come to Rolling Meadows to use the park, and most of the signatures are from people out of the, were completely against it. They love the park. They don't see why this would even be put in there. And it's not about the cell tower. It's about its location.
Mr. Roberts, you could use the mic.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Set's two. The ruler's coming out in a minute. I know it is. It's not about the cell tower. It's about its location in a city park, R1 Residential Zoning District. It'll completely ruin the look of the park, not necessarily the surrounding structures that really is going to stand out. The generator, the noise that these things generate, the proximity to homes within approximately 200 feet from this thing, in the middle of a summer, you're going to hear this thing hum. And it will have a direct effect on our property values. That's guaranteed. Ask any real estate agent. She knows, every real estate agent knows. If you're trying to sell a house, they're going to walk out in your backyard, what are they going to see? A cell tower. There it goes. And the way I understand it, it's the responsibility of every governing body to protect the values of your home, not just one governing. Every governing body is supposed to try to protect the value of your home. And if one of these towers is installed, how many more are going to come? The can of worms is going to be open. Why not? You might see these things scatter down from here to Salt School. Ridiculous. I hope that the park district would listen to the residents and decide that this is just not a good idea. It's a very small reward. $24,000 a year over 25 years is not a lot of money in the overall budget of the, and taking the effect inflation into that, and in 10 years, what's the $20,000 grand worth? It's not going to go up. Anyway, that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person on the sign-up sheet is Shannon Kelly.
Hello.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Shannon Kelly. I am a longtime resident, and also, I work in the industry as a site acquisition specialist. So I kind of understand what's going on and what you guys are doing, because that's my job to analyze the data for cell companies. Excuse me. In most cases, the only opposition, only the opposition has a voice at local meetings. And I would like to show the mayor, the alderman, and the city council that are considering the 35-foot extension, how many of your constituents are in favor of the flag pole and the extension to ensure that this tower is built. In the last two days, I have gone around town and spoken to residents about the facts of the situation as I know it. The park district already has the right to build a 75-foot tower at the location discussed tonight, but Verizon has proposed a 110-foot stealth flag pole instead of an ugly tower with antennas on the top. But this 35-foot increase requires a variance from the city. Residents have been signing this position to show our aldermen that are considering the 35- You might see these things scatter down the, from here to Salt School. Ridiculous. I hope that the park district would listen to the residents and decide that this is just not a good idea. It's a very small reward. $24,000 a year over 25 years is not a lot of money in the, in overall budget of the, and taking the effect inflation into that, and in 10 years, what's the $0.25 grand worth? It's not going to go up. Anyway, that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person on the sign-in sheet is Shannon Kelly. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Shannon Kelly. I am a longtime resident, and also I work in the industry as a site acquisition specialist. So I kind of understand what's going on and what you guys are doing, because that's my job to analyze the data for, for cell companies. Excuse me. In most cases, the only opposition, only the opposition has a voice at local meetings. And I would like to show the mayor, the alderman, and the city council that are considering the 35-foot extension, how many of your constituents are in favor of the flagpole and the extension to ensure that this tower is built. In the last two days, I have gone around town and spoken to residents about the facts of the situation as I know it. The park district already has the right to build a 75-foot tower at the location discussed tonight, but Verizon has proposed a 110-foot stealth flagpole instead of an ugly tower with antennas on the top. But this 35-foot increase requires a variance from the city. Residents have been signing this petition to show our aldermen that are considering the 35-foot extension, how many of their constituents are actually in favor of this? Sorry, very nervous. They've had the opportunity to voice their support for the flagpole and the substantial revenue source for our park district instead of an unsightly pole or worse, Verizon choosing to put their tower in another location, likely a big business or a private landowner in the same area, and then the park district would get nothing. Cell phone towers in our communities and all communities are controversial. Everyone uses cell phones, and as, as we become more reliant on them to provide connections to our families, our work, and our world, more towers are needed to supply the signal and the speeds that we expect. Towers are going up all over the country, and yes, some are unsightly, but some blend into the background and are hardly noticeable at all. Towers are also expensive, and the cell phone companies work hard to negotiate with cities and landowners to put towers where their customers need them. The rent that the cell phone companies pay to landowners can be substantial, and many landowners, businesses, and cities can make a lot of money by having a tower on their land. If the city approves this variance, the flagpole will also allow another cell phone company to be located in the same space, which actually reduces the number of cell towers needed in the area and providing better service to our community. The variance will also ensure that the park district receives the rent from this tower, which can help the park district continue to provide outstanding facilities and events for our community. I've been a resident of this community most of my life and cherish the parks, and I would like to see them improve not only with the addition of the flagpole, but also by using the monies generated to further our parks and their progress. I provide a documentation for you to read and welcome any further conversations, like the one that I had with my alderman, Joe Gallo, this afternoon. I feel that providing education and the actual facts is a way in which to further our city, our parks, and our communities. Please feel free to stop me after the meeting or contact me with information provided in your reading material. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. The next person on the sign-in sheet is Mr. Bill Cooley.
Thank you. Hello. Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff, my name is Bill Cooley, and I am also one of the commissioners in the park district board. When we were looking at options for this cell tower, nobody, and I mean nobody, wanted an ugly cell tower in our park, and there was no way it was going to go into our park. It wasn't going to happen. When they started talking about stealth towers, I had some familiar with that, with that, because I had lived in California for a while, and they are really opposed to cell towers in California. So I started looking at some of these options. One of the options they talked about was a post with a light for the park. We said, you know what? Sounds like an interesting idea, but the more we explored it, the more we knew it was going to be objected, objection by the neighbors because of lights shining into their backyards, near the windows. They wouldn't like it. Next, we looked at the option of the flagpole. And then it occurred to us, Rolling Meadows is a community that was built for and founded by the veterans of the, of World War II and of the Korean War. Who doesn't like an American flag? A big, beautiful, American flag in the middle of our park would be gorgeous, and it would become a landmark for our city. You could see it from Kirchhoff Road. You can see it from all around the area. I can't imagine anything more beautiful than a large flag in our parks. And I know that as I've driven around neighborhoods, I've seen large flagpoles and large American flags, and I've always thought how beautiful they were. Now, knowing a little bit about it, the flag, about cell towers as I do, I always suspected they were cell towers, but I didn't know for sure. I just thought they were beautiful flagpoles with a beautiful American flag. And when they came to us and offered this option for our park, personally, I said absolutely. Who wouldn't want an American flag, a big, beautiful, American flag in our park? That's all. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. The next person on the sign-in sheet is Christine Savino. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Christine Savino. I'm newly elected to the park board in April. Most of what I had to say has already been said by the other members that have spoke. The only thing I'll add to it is I attended, prior to making the decision to run for the park board, I attended many of the meetings prior. Not one thing the park board does during the meetings is taken lightly. They consider the residents, they consider the parks. I was very impressed by that, and that was one of the reasons why I decided to run and join the venture to continue that. So I just wanted to make sure to add that. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. The next person on the sign-in sheet is Mr. Bill Roberts. Good evening, sir, and thank you for taking the time.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me. There's apparently a lot of motion about they lit up an American flag, which I can certainly understand. But I think the American flag has its spot. I don't think it's right in somebody's backyard, lit up at night with a flapping lanyard when the wind blows. And I guess my basic question is, why is the park district or the city willing to sell their, their soul to the devil? For what? For what, $20,000 a year? That's, that's kind of a paltry sum for the abuse and intrusion on the surrounding houses in the neighborhood. I love the flag. I have a flag. If I fly it at night, I keep a light on it. If I don't fly it at night, then I don't keep a light on it. The turning of park district land into commercial use is something I think that Kimball Hill might be very unhappy about. Why is a desperate need for a little bit of money worth the intrusion? I'm sorry, but lit up an American flag in my backyard is going to be an intrusion at night. It's not, it's, it's over, I don't know what to say. I was two years that veteran, so I appreciate the flag. I guess my, to wrap this little rambling up is, why? Why do we need it? We don't need the money. I've talked to previous president of the park board, and he said, there's not short in the budget. There's no big demand to impose this on the public just for a few dollars. The aesthetic value of what we get compared to the intrusion on the people that live next to it, it's not worth the trade-off. Thank you.
The next person on the agenda is Tammy Roberts.
Hello. My name's Tammy Roberts. I'm a 58-year-old resident of Rolling Meadows. I am against the tower in Kimball Hill Park or any city park. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time tonight. The next person up is Robin Grunfeld. Robin, how do you say your name?
Grunfeld.
Grunfeld. I apologize.
No, no problem. I am against it. I'm not against cell towers. I'm against where they're going. And it's right out my back door. I could see this, and believe me, Tammy and I have visited many cell towers, and we did see that one in Hoffman. The pictures, if you don't see it in person, those pictures does look like a slim pole. It's not. It's, I think Tammy on one of, we have a picture, she could have been five people going around the pole. They're big. And the sound, I heard it before, as soon as I got out of the car, I heard the humming. And in our beautiful park in Kimball Hill, I've heard many sounds. And that park, if you don't live by it, you don't know this. It echoes. And I love hearing the echo of the, you know, people playing baseball, the kids laughing, but that hum is going to echo. And then what do I do? My property taxes or property value will drop with the cell tower. People come, if I want to sell my house, and hear that humming in the night is going to drive them crazy, and I'm not going to be able to sell. I've lived here over 60-some years, and I enjoy my parks. Please put the tower, the tower needs to be put somewhere else so that I can continue enjoying the park and everyone else who comes to the park. Thank you.
That completes the sign-in sheet for tonight. Any comments from the council? Ms. Majikis, Alderman Majikis.
Thank you, Mayor. I am not in favor of this, as I have not kept to myself. First off, I want to say to all the residents that have, are here and who have reached out to myself and other members of the council, thank you, both sides. Thank you. It's what we need on any topic. So please keep it up. I'm not supposed to say um. This, this antenna, you can call it a flagpole. It's not a flagpole. It's an antenna with a flag on the top. Yes, who wouldn't love to see the American flag blowing in the wind? I have one in my front yard. I have a POW flag in my front yard. My, my niece is a veteran. I, I'm American. I support us. There are plenty other places in the park to put a flag, if that is what your big comment is going to be about, who doesn't want to look at the beautiful American flag? I agree. Plenty of other places to put it. But this is not about putting a flag up. This is about putting a cell tower, an antenna up, that has a generator next to it, has a storage building next to that, and has a fencing around it. Will it affect property values? Yes. Yes, it will. I can tell you from my experience, it will affect them. When you go through our codes, excuse me, let me move this. It says, purpose in section 122-121, the resident district set forth in this division are established in order to protect public health, and it goes on to say other things, but to make sure we protect against offensive noise and to help protect property, residential development, and property values. We're here to do that. There, we have the right to have commercial and non-commercial. Non-commercial would be like a, a transit, or a trans, an amateur radio operator assistance band facility, that type. A commercial, which this is, would be for a licensed communications with Verizon. When you go further into our zoning codes, we state, under section 122-3, paragraph 2, accessory use in residential zoning districts includes, but is not limited to, a radio transmitting and receiving towers, wind generators, and solar collector vices. Non, and non-commercial, non-commercial antenna structures, which do not exceed 75 feet. That's perfect. That's in the R1 residential. When we go into the commercial and business zoning districts, it tells us that commercial antenna structures are allowed not to exceed 75 feet. That's for your commercial and business. What I'm asking for tonight is, one, that we listen to the residents. We have petitions on both sides and stuff, but we listen to the people that are actually backing up to this property, the ones whose property is going to be affected by it. And if you don't think your property will be affected by it, you're wrong, because it's a ripple effect. So I'm asking tonight that a moratorium for staff to look, be put in place for staff to look at antennas and anything that could be antenna codes before, you know, we can go any further. I would, I would like a straw poll tonight for a moratorium on this topic.
Thank you, Alderman Majikis. Other, other comments before we go forward with that? Mr. Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple, couple points I'd like to make, just small ones, they're not that important, but I guess I'll just speak my piece a little bit. I don't know if I'm for this or against it. I guess, Mr. Mayor, I guess one of the questions I would like you to ask the people from the tower company, is this noise thing a true factor? Is it, how loud is it? I have no idea what the answer to that is. I guess I'd like to have more information on that. I guess the other thing I would just offer as a possibility, I live on the west side of town, and people to the north of me had this same fight that lasted about four or five years in the Hunting Ridge neighborhood of Palatine, near Fremont High School. It went on and on and on. There was all kinds of major fights. People were angry about it. They come up with a solution that seems to have solved most of the big complaints. And if you go over to Fremont's football field now, they are the third or fourth school in the 211 district that have actually put a cell tower on top of one of their light poles on the football field. In Fremont's case, it's on the north, north end of the field and on the west end. It seems to have solved. It's not just a tower. It's, was an existing flag, an existing light pole. So I guess the point I'm making is there are other opportunities if this particular post, flagpole, whatever you want to call it, tower, there are other options I think that maybe could be explored if this is so objectionable to people, is just a thought. The other thought I would make is I can't support Mrs. Majikis's idea, because I'm, I know for a fact that there's another cell tower being contemplated inside the city of Rolling Meadows that I'm aware of. I wouldn't want to stop that from going forward by something that we voted on tonight. If we want to make it site-specific, that's a different story, but I don't want to, I don't want a general moratorium on cell towers. Thank you.
Well, let's get your question answered first. Would you please, Ken, thank you, would you come to the mic?
Hi.
And I, I've been, you were asking, is that the decimal rating or power?
Well, it seems like a number of people who are objecting to it are talking about noise, and I, I don't know if that's true or not. I guess I would just like a better explanation, and I don't know if you have facts or figures that could support it one way or another. That would be appreciative.
Yes. Well, the generator that will run is usually anywhere between 59 to 65 decibels. That is lower than you would find for your central air conditioning unit. The generator is only planned to run, it'll be tested approximately once a month. It'll run for about six hours or so, and then will shut off, unless, of course, there is something where there is no power, and then the generator will run continuously.
So this is strictly a backup generator?
It is a backup generator.
Also, it's not running, it's not running every day?
No, no, it is.
Oh, okay. I was, I thought it was a generator that.
There's a spider.
That powered all the time. Okay. I don't want you to die. Get away from. Wow. Is someone trying to poison the other side? I don't know. Okay, thank you for the explanation. It's very helpful.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. On your other, Mr. Gallo.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just say for the record that the park commissioners have had the opportunity to discuss the issue more than one occasion. This is the first opportunity we, as a council, have had to hear the issue as a whole, and so I am in favor of putting the brakes on. And so I am in favor of putting the brakes on receiving more information, engaging in more dialogue with the community members, and then reviewing the information that's been put on my desk before moving forward. Because I do understand that there's a perception of maybe how this situation has played out with the particular antenna or base station versus the actual application of an antenna in a park. And then there's also the opportunity to not just be a this or that, but maybe a this and that, if we can kind of reassess what's valuable, what's needed, and what's most important to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Are there other, Mr. Banjo?
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Gallo. This was advertised as informational, so I wasn't expecting a straw poll. Also, most of the information has been handed out to me in the form of binders with petitions for and petitions against. I don't make a habit of reading stuff while I'm listening to other folks, so I have not read that yet, and I don't feel prepared to discuss this. I've got the information that I need to take home, and I've gotten the information from the speakers tonight, so if we're gonna do a straw poll, I'm not gonna raise my hand either way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banjo. Mr. Diestes.
I was at the zoning board meeting, and I need clarification. Can the Park District allow Central State's Tower in Verizon to put up a seventy-five-foot, whatever you want to call it, flag tower, flagpole, antenna? And is the only thing that City Council has to load on in some future meeting is whether we agree with the zoning board or not? So there's two questions.
Jim, will let you take that one.
All right. With an unlimited knowledge of what this structure actually consists of, it would, it would appear within the R1 district, which is what this property is zoned, the commercial height limitation for an antenna is seventy-five feet.
So yes, they can do.
So, yeah, there's a question as to the definition of a commercial antenna, but I don't know enough to answer that question as to whether it comes within that definition or not. And so, but they certainly could do that, but that's the zoning code, it's not the park district, so, but, you know, it would be a permitted use, based on what limited knowledge I have, subject to the construction of that definition of commercial antenna.
Is that, Mr.? To answer your poll question. Mr. Comstock, anything else?
In your second part, again, before you come to the City Council, is the special use that they were asking for at one-hundred-and-ten. So again, one-hundred-and-ten, as you've heard, is what they were requesting. It has a negative recommendation to you, and it was the special use, but yes, seventy-five, they're allowed to.
Can I, can I just, just clarify that? It would be, at the proposed height of one-hundred-and-ten feet, based on the permitted limitation of seventy-five, it would be a variance for the increased height. It wouldn't be a special use. And don't want to confuse it with a special use in the R1 district being for non-commercial. So, just so we're all clear on that. Thanks.
Okay. Are there other comments?
Yeah, real quick here. So, this is an awkward one, because you have one taxing body over here, you know, with the, with the Park District, trying to do their job and generate revenue and what have you, and I totally understand that. And may, may have been a need to add a town meeting, even with the Park District, before it ended up in, in, I'm gonna say, our laps. That's my opinion, anyway. But it is what it is, and here we are, right? So, you know, we're a different, obvious taxing body, and we, we also listen to our residents, and we also deal with our zoning group. And our zoning group has not been too positive about this, correct?
That is correct.
That is correct. So, so my, my take on it is, and I love American flags, too, and I keep one in my house twenty-four seven, and I have a light above that that's on at the same time, but I don't think I would want it in my backyard, and that's just kind of how I feel about it. So if I kind of wouldn't want it in my backyard, I wouldn't necessarily want someone else to, to have to have it in their backyard if they, if they had a, if they had a difference.
Thank you, Mr. Beanboss. Other thoughts, comments?
So, Mr. Recall, so, question for you is, looking at a straw poll for a moratorium, we go forward with the moratorium, that just simply temporarily puts a hold on it until the council comes back with a new ordinance, is that correct? Or is it just a moratorium? Just, I'd like your definition of how that would go forward.
Well, the, to touch on a point Alderman Cannon raised, the moratorium would be a full, complete moratorium. The question then is, how long is the moratorium gonna stay in effect? The next question to that is, during the moratorium period, what's the City Council gonna do? I mean, typically, you would hire a consultant or do some study of some sort, so that some person or group or firm can come back to the city and say, based on our study and our results and our findings, here are suggestions for how you should amend your zoning code, if at all. So, those are the, I think the considerations that need be undertaken if, in fact, a moratorium is to be, is to be, is to be put in place.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Recall. Any other comments? Alderman Majikis.
Thank you. Not to beat it in the ground, but I, I think that's important to, to take into consideration here, because I don't know how many, well, I know one person, have read the zoning codes, the book, and I, the person I know can read it better than any of us, and it is so confusing, the reading and the understanding of it, and that is, that's why I'm asking for this moratorium, so we have some time to have staff do a study, you know, on this, to, to clarify, so that people are understanding, because they're, you read it, and it's telling you, "Commercial cannot go in an R1." Well, this is commercial, but no, that's okay, but it doesn't matter, it's an R1. But then it says, no, it's gotta be in industrial, and it's just too confusing. The clarification needs to be made. I'm not asking for months, I'm not asking for years. You know, I'm just asking that we look at this soon and come back with an answer that the residents can understand and is clear for the future. Thank you.
Any other questions? I gather we can focus this, a couple different questions. First off, we can ask, do a straw vote for a moratorium to come before the council on any, what are we calling it, flag, the flag antenna?
Any antenna.
Any antenna. Okay. So we can do a flag, we can, we'll do that as our first straw vote, with the understanding that the council would go forward and do a study to clarify the code. So that would be the first straw vote. How many would be in favor of a moratorium, the council doing a study to clarify the code, as Alderman Majikis has brought that forward? Please raise your hand.
How long is the moratorium? Is this a temporary moratorium, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Three. And then we, those against?
Three.
Three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Diestes.
I, I don't like the idea of a moratorium, but I agree with Alderman Majikis that we should get some clarification of what, what it says. And, again, our responsibility to the citizens in this particular issue is to vote yes to go to something over seventy-five, or go to one-hundred-and-ten foot. That's what the council will be doing, but I would like to get clarification of what the zone, what the code says. Now, if staff can give us some information, I would certainly be, I would like to hear that, so that it's clarified. I don't know if I'd go so far as to say we do a moratorium, because there's no time limit, there's nothing, like Jim said, there's, there's nothing there, other than we're gonna stop it all. I don't think the flagpole antenna is going anywhere, because it's gotta come to this council for two votes, and this is, so it'll be one this month, and there'll be one sometime the next month. So we have plenty of time to get a information, thank you, on what the code says. But again, our responsibility, as was outlined, is do we allow for a variance to what the code currently says? And the zoning board said no, and quite honestly, we have committees that study these things, these, these types of issues, and they come back to us, just like the Vehicle Replacement Committee comes back, just like the Capital Improvement Committee comes back, the zoning board comes back, and if we're smart people, we're listening to what these committees who have vetted this thing out say to us. So I'm not in favor of the moratorium. I am in favor of getting clarification of the code, and I don't know if we need to do any more straw polls tonight, because our next job is, do we vote yes or no to one-hundred-and-ten or not? Because that's all we're, we're really supposed to be doing. This was informational. We got some information. We know how many decibels it is. We know how, it only goes on once a month. We know more information. If we need more, let's get more. But our job is, is it one-hundred-and-ten or is it seventy, or not? That's all we're gonna be voting on, yes or no. But I do want clarification, like Mrs. Majikis has said. I really want to find out what can be done, and then, once we have that information, then we can take another step, like Alderman Banjo said. I just got all this today, and I'm not reading it right here, so I'm not comfortable with it. I am comfortable saying, I know I have to vote for one-hundred-and-ten or not.
Ms. Majikis.
I'm sorry, but I just want to clarify, again, the reason I'm asking for the moratorium is because the Park District can still do a seventy-five foot at any point. Just put the permit in there, whether they wait for us or not, on the one-hundred-and-ten. They can just go ahead. So that's what the residents that have called me, knocked on my door, stopped me in the park, have, are concerned about. The residents that are actually looking out their, I was in one of the residents' homes, looking out their beautiful family room, that's all glass, and I would see this lovely cell tower, and I totally get what they're saying. So that's why I'm asking.
With your permission, could you ask, could you rephrase it and ask, possibly ask for a moratorium specific to Kimball Hill Park?
Yes.
For, in a allotted amount of time, so that we can, we can delay that until we get code information?
Am I, is that allowed?
We'll ask Mr. Recall here.
He looks perplexed.
Yeah, he is.
Sorry, Jim.
That's all right. You know, I, I think if you're gonna put a moratorium in place, you gotta put it, it's gonna be like a moratorium. You can't say we're gonna put a moratorium on this one location.
Can you put a time limit on it?
That's why I suggested, just put a time limit on it. If you're gonna put a moratorium, I think a moratorium needs to be a blanket moratorium, because you gotta study it all, you're not just studying this one spot.
Yes.
But you need to put, you need to put a timeframe on it, whether it's two months, three months, whatever it might be.
Mr. Diestes.
All right. And I get that, and can the city of Rowley Meadows ask the Park District Board not to make any decisions until we get a code clarification? So we don't have to put a moratorium on, we can ask them, city, from one taxing body to another, can you just hold off until we get a clarification?
I think that residents would be acceptable to that. I don't know.
That's a neighborly way of doing it.
I agree with you. I agree with you. And, you know, like, this, this is obviously a hotter topic than a lot of people thought it would been, and if, I think some of the residents knew about this in the last two years of discussion, it wouldn't have been so difficult, or, you know, maybe communicated better. But that would be, I would be great with that, but I don't know if that's possible.
Mr. Recall.
Thank you. I, I don't, I don't know what the arrangement is and the status is of the agreement between the, the antenna company, I forget the name, or the Park District, that, those agreements may very well be done, in which case, the only thing that would potentially stand in the way of the antenna being constructed is, is a permit at seventy-five feet or a variance at one-hundred-and-ten. I, I don't know. The Park District may not have any more control at this point, is the reason I say that. I just don't know the answer to the question.
I understand.
It is a question.
I understand.
Well, if we're, Mr. Cannon.
Since we have a whole row of people who are from the Park District, I think the real body's there, right? Is it possible we could ask the director of the Park District, or, or the president, excuse me, either one? Just with, I think they're all fine residents of our city. They're not here to fight and get in a big battle over this thing. I think if we ask them politely, I think they'd be willing to just hold off. I don't know if there's a contractual thing. I guess maybe that's what Mr. Mayor was saying, so I don't know if there's a timeframe on that. Could we ask them that question? Is that legal?
Come on up, Dan.
We do have a contract in place, but we have a board meeting next week, and we'd certainly be amendable to putting that on our agenda to discuss next week.
But does that mean you can hold off for just a little bit?
We'd, we'd put it on our agenda. I, I can't make the decision for the entire board, and we only have three members here of the board, so I can put it on our agenda for us to discuss postponing it.
But do you have a timeframe where you have to make a decision with the cell phone company, or do you have some leeway there yet?
There's a time clock that started ticking, but there is, you know, plenty of time before the next step has to go on.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Mr. Beanboss.
Why don't we make a motion to have this for a month, then, for thirty days? For a time limit on it, gives time for the, for the Rowley Meadows Park District Board, time enough to get back to us and, for us to do our, our due diligence.
So we're speaking of a thirty-day moratorium?
Right, that's my motion.
Mr. Majikis?
I agree.
Okay. Can we have a straw vote, Ben, from the council?
I'm sorry, Mr. Cal. Sorry. Excuse me. I just want to get some clarification, since the ordinance will have to be prepared. You need a first reading, obviously, as we all know. You need a second reading. I mean, that's, is it gonna be thirty days from the date of the second reading, or? I mean, with the draft, the ordinance, I just want some direction from the council as to how that's to be drafted.
Because October tenth would be the second reading.
Right. So you want to go to November the ninth? I mean.
We say to the end of October.
I just want the direction to do the ordinance, because the council wants to.
That's forty-five days.
Will the, will the end of October be enough time?
I think. I mean, we can shoot for that. I mean, hopefully, that would be enough time, and we can always extend it if need be. But let's shoot for the end of October.
Okay.
And I can prepare an ordinance that would provide for a moratorium through October thirty-one of this year.
Okay.
If that's what the council directs.
Alderman, you majikis, since you called for the straw poll, that's.
That is, that would work, thank you.
So you're proposing that there'd be a moratorium through, I was at October thirty-first? Okay. Can we show of hands for a straw poll? Vote to be drafted for a ordinance for a moratorium through October thirty-first. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Sorry. I'm jumping on there.
I'm not voting, man.
We're back to three.
Those again, those against?
One.
Three to one?
It's not a majority. No. It doesn't have enough to go.
Doesn't go.
It fails for lack of.
It fails for lack of majority. I'm advised by council that we're out of options.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that ends this one. We will take a short recess, unless all of you would like to sit down for the budget for the next, do you know, whatever time?
Yeah.
Remember.
The meeting tonight was all information.
Throwing down some.
It's Saturday night.
Well, yeah, you got a spark coat on. I'm old, dude. I'm goddamn old.
At least the residents now know.
Alderman.
Thank you.
Wow. I moved the sensor mic in.
Get you all ready to go, girl.
Okay, we are back out of recess. I, I gather, Mr. Crumstock, it's your turn, and Melissa.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. We'll try and make this painless. It is, it is, yes. It is the first initial look at the budget for 2018. And this is the proposed budget. Some of the pieces, obviously, we've talked about with the current proposed budget has a 4.8% property tax increase. When Finance Director Melissa Gallagher is done with this presentation and the short PowerPoint, there's only a few questions that we really need to address tonight specifically about the property tax. And you'll hear about that. Do you want to stay with what's proposed? Do you want to increase? Do you have other ideas? The other idea that we need, part of the discussion with the property taxes is that we really need to finish that 4.8, then we finish up with our truth with taxation and some of the other pieces. The other part is local roads. We do have some questions about that. Any other changes or consideration in the budget that's proposed before you? But again, tonight, we really do need the straw votes on the property tax to make sure that you're comfortable with the 4.8. Or are you going to increase it? Are you going to decrease it? Any of those other pieces? Because we are working in our schedules to keep up with that other parts. And then, obviously, local roads, and then some others. So for folks at home, we do have the small presentation. It is the proposed on, obviously, at the October Committee of the Home Meeting. This will be back again. With that, I do turn it over to the presentation to Finance Director Melissa Gallagher.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Crumstock, tonight. And in your council packet, I just want to review a few items before we go through the council presentation. Within the council packet, you do have the proposed budget planning calendar, the estimated fund balance for the 2018 proposed budget, the debt service outstanding as of December 31, 2017. And then you have a general fund summary and expenditure for revenues as well for the 2018 proposed budget, just the summary page, and the 2017 proposed tax levy for 2018 proposed budget. So that's in the council packet. But of course, what you have online under the website, citirm.org, you have the entire budget as well, just in case folks at home want to take a look, too. So just overall, to set the stage, we are looking at a couple of things here. Next week, we will have the tax levy hearing, the public hearing at the September 26 Committee of the Home Meeting, or the City Council Meeting. And also then, in October 10th, that'll be the first public hearing for the budget. So those are things, as City Manager Crumstock has mentioned, items that we'll need to look at and discuss. And then we have some questions at the end. So overall, the city is continuing its commitment to completing capital projects, looking at fund balances, and making sure that we have reserves for the future. The general fund currently shows the estimated fund balance for 2018 at 27.6%. And we're going to go through a couple of pieces as we go along. But overall, we are looking for some direction on some pieces. And also, just to go over as well, that the general fund has moderate revenue changes overall from budget to budget. And then also that there are some expenditure changes, but really there is a decrease overall. So I'm going to go through now the presentation. As we mentioned, the budget calendar is in the council packet itself, and that was released August 22nd with the council packet. And that is under the city's website at citirm.org. And we do have a copy of the printed budget at the library and with the city clerk as well. The city manager did hold, along with the finance director and myself, completed initial one-on-one meetings with our mayor and our city council members. And we also open up if you have need for additional meetings, we're of course able to schedule those. As mentioned, we did have, is scheduled for the tax levy hearing for both the city and library coming up at September 26th, so that's next week. And then, a public hearing for the city's budget and library's budget will take place at the October 10th City Council Meeting. We are very pleased with this. This is the Government Finance Officers Award for the 2017 budget. This is a nationally recognized program that we have submitted two years in a row and have received this prestigious award. The award does reflect the city's commitment to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. And this is also reviewed highly and favorably from our credit rating agencies and our auditors. So it's a very prestigious award. And we, of course, will be working on that to present that to the GFOA for our 2018 year as well. Again, so as, as mentioned, the 2018 budget does continue capital projects and our commitment to roads, water utility, utility fund projects, and many other projects. The general fund does show a 27.6% fund balance policy range of 15 to 30%. And overall, there are moderate revenue changes, but overall, it's, it's, there's not a lot of increase for revenues. And overall, general fund expenditures, when you exclude pensions, show a decrease from 2017. The property tax levy does deal with pensions, funding pensions, committing more funds to local road fund, and keeping the general fund on a financially prudent track. Again, this is in your budget packet, and we have it in the budget as well. That's our planning calendar, as you can see, all the way from September 19th tonight, all the way to November 28th. We have lots of items planned, but the two big ones are the public hearings, as mentioned. And then we have another discussion in October, the October Committee of the Home Meeting, where we also will discuss the library's budget. Dave Ruff from the library will be here for that presentation. And we'll also go over remaining items for the city's budget. And then we have following readings of ordinances throughout in resolutions. This is a very good graphic to show our property tax levy, which is an average of three townships. The most recent data is for 2016 budget. This does show in our audit as well. And that slice there, just around Washington's ear, is about 15 cents out of every tax dollar, is the city's revenue. The major portion of a tax bill is the schools. And we like to highlight that to know that there is a very good value for your dollar. This is a chart that folks have seen before. It's our outstanding debt service. As of 2017, we have a number of bonds that are maturing. And one of those in particular will be maturing off the tax levy. And in 2018, there'll be another one off the tax levy. I'm going to spend just a moment here to kind of highlight for you, and it's in the packet as well, but this is the property tax levy, as City Manager Crumstock mentioned, is a 4.8% increase year-over-year at $641,000. And this was presented back in the August Committee of the Home Meeting. But we did want to bring it back, of course. This is part of the proposed budget, reviewed one-on-one with the city council members. And we did want to review it one-on-one here tonight. In the first line item there, police protection, there's a year-over-year change of $220,164 in also fire protection. What that's doing is bringing that to previous levels. That was reduced to provide more road funding in previous years. And just as a reminder that the total general fund budget for police and fire, public safety, is more than about, just about 17 million of the total general fund budget. So it's important that we continue the commitment in the general fund in funding those items for police and fire protection. The next two line items, which are police and fire pensions, you can see the year-over-year change from police pension is $273,000 for the police pension, and $251,000 for the fire pension year-over-year. This commitment to the pension funds is funding in line with funding to the 2033 number versus 2040, and also funding along the other parameters that we have set. So just as a reminder that this is a commitment by the city of council and this is part of the property tax levy, like all municipalities mostly. For I'm Ruff, there's a deduction of $25,000. That's due to some of the Tier Two savings and some other investment return savings there. And then also, the public works line item that changed as well. That's an year-over-year increase of $143,000. Just as a reminder, that was about a $500,000 line item. This also, as mentioned before, this is restoring to trying to move toward that direction so that we keep the general fund financially sound going forward. The next line item there, local road fund, the annual street program, the year-over-year change, as mentioned, is $350,000. So bringing it from $550,000 to $900,000. And that increase there, well, the percentage there, it's not a 0% to the side there, I see that, but that is an increase of $350,000 year-over-year, bringing it to a total of $900,000 for annual streets. 911 Fund, there is a $50,000 increase year-over-year. And what we're saying here is that that deduction from the debt service, which the bond matured for 2005, that was reallocated with additional items, as mentioned and discussed. So we're bringing that to you to show you the line item changes year-over-year, and then more discussion will follow at the end. This is in your packet. This is the fund balance summary year-over-year, meaning beginning of the year 2018, where we estimate, of course, we don't know where our ending fund balance is in 2017 until our audit comes out in June. But right now, your estimated fund balance is $19 million. And at the end of 2018, we're estimating $15 million. And that's all your funds all in. When we're thinking about that, we're looking at a lot of capital. A lot of capital is going to be completed and estimated in the proposed budget. Capital looking at the vehicle equipment replacement fund, utilities fund, building and land fund, and also the local road fund. And this also is in the budget itself as well. This summary page here is the general fund summary page, and that will show you at the end of the year for 2018, a $9 million unassigned fund balance. That is a deduction when you think about the commitment to the city's unfunded balances of $1.4 million. That's already removed from this $9 million. In blue there, all the way at the end for 2018, the total fund balance is estimated at $9 million or 27.6% of expenditures. So within line of that funding balance, fund balance policy of 15 to 30% for the general fund, which is our largest operating fund. Year-over-year expenditures there, you can see $32 million for expenditures and $32 million for revenues. Moving on to the utilities fund, this is also a budget page for utilities rates. There is a proposal for a 7% increase for water year-over-year. Sewer has a 5% increase and 5% for stormwater, and no increase to the refuse rate. Those are showing you here on the screen, the 2017 current rates and the 2018 proposed rates with those increases in that. With the 2018 proposed budget in the utilities fund, if you bring in the increases for water, sewer, and stormwater, you'll see that the monthly estimated charge, when a family of perhaps four uses 8,000 gallons a month, the increase would be about $8 for each month. And also, I just want to put a side note onto that. We are also looking at the Baxter and Woodman rate study to also further analyze the items in the utilities fund to make sure that we're looking at rate consistency over time. And that's a project that we were working at in 2018. So tonight, within the council packet, and we put this up here for you as well, we did have some questions that we came up with for talking points, and wanted to start with a couple of items. So first off, we did want to look at the property tax levy. And within that, we have three key questions. I do have a couple of footnotes here. As mentioned, the debt service portion was reallocated, and the increase to the tax levy is 4.8 at $641,000. Just as a side note, future bond issuance items are not included in this property tax levy. And so for this item, that is something that will be included in prior, in future items. So as a reminder to the city council, city council did give us direction to move forward with running scenarios with our financial consultant, and that's what we'll be doing over the next several months. So we have some key questions for city council, as outlined here. One of the first items is, does the city council desire to see any additional amount to the tax levy? And I'm going to let, to really turn it over to the mayor to bring forward the discussion at this point.
Thank you, Melissa. Well, this is pretty straightforward with, and thank you, Melissa, and staff for coming forward with it. So question A is, does the city council desire to see any additional increment added to the property tax levy? Is there any discussion on that point or comments before we give direction?
Yes, I see that.
Okay. Does the city council, the next question is, the city council approve this working draft for the fiscal year 2018 proposed budget? So staff may begin moving forward with notices and other items for the budget?
Yes.
Do we, Mr. DeSantis?
No. It looks like we're entering into deficit spending, and I'm not in favor of any types of deficit spending. I'm trying to find it here, but I thought, we're going down, we're losing $1 million year-over-year at the end of the year.
I'm sorry, can you play out where you're coming up?
Sure. On the fund balances summary, it says, our beginning balance is 19,795, and our ending balance for the year is going to be $15 million. So we're deficit spending $3,008 million. Am I reading that correctly?
And that's, and that fund balance summary page, yes, you are. But of course, what we are looking at is a lot of capital. So the use of reserves for those pieces, as we've discussed, is really related to capital. When we go looking at the funds here, for the general fund in particular, the over and the under, that $565,000, part of that...
Is managers hold, I get that.
Right.
But I'm still seeing at the end of the day, over $3 million in deficit spending. And I'm, I guess I'm just not in favor of, of that kind of spending, at least not to the point where I'm going to say, yes, go ahead and publish anything today.
I think, going back to the original question, it's more towards the property tax. If you're comfortable with what you saw in the 4.8, that's what we're asking for. So...
Well, if we didn't have this much deficit spending, then the property tax would probably be, probably be lower.
Difference of looking things. Because again, part of what you're also seeing is the debt service, E911, there's a big capital item that actually makes that one look a little bit different from one year to another because we knew that we were going to be utilizing capital out of that to bring that back into. It's still within the parameters.
Okay. Well, what about local road? We talked about that at our meeting, and it still looks like we're going to be down a half a million dollars.
Yes. That is the other discussion that we have, and that's the next slide that actually comes up because that fund does have a negative fund balance following some of the discussions that we've had with city council, specifically the Kirchhoff Road overall project that we're still waiting for Northwest Municipal Conference to see if we're going to get the money. And again, that's where the question comes in the next slide. Do you want to keep Northwest Municipal Conference item in there for Kirchhoff Road? Which, again, if you were to take that out of the budget, then we would have to tell Northwest Municipal Conference, don't worry about it. They wouldn't give us a response. But that would make that negative in local roads be positive because that one line item actually deals with the negative that's in this at this point in time.
So, so in the worst case, it's negative. But why am I, why are you asking me to move ahead with a 4.8 when we haven't had all the other discussions? The 4.8 should be the last question you're asking. And I'm not in favor of this negative deficit spending because this is going to impact us the following year. I'm off for roads, and like we had in our meeting, I said, we, I, our, the capital improvement committee said we should spend 1.8. And the council said we should spend 1. And this is saying, I'm not sure how much this is saying we're spending, but I know in our meeting, you told me that this was over. And I said, I will not vote for this budget if this line is over.
That is correct.
So it's over. So I'm not voting for this budget. I'm voting no. Because I don't think we should be doing deficit spending like this to this extent. As much as I want the 1.8 in roads, I don't want to take money from Peter to pay Paul. I don't want to take next year's money or 19's money and use it in 18. And we had that conversation. So no, I won't vote for this.
Well, and if I can just add to that, Alderman DeSantis...
Ms. Gallagher, go ahead.
Thank you. As Alderman, or as Mr. Crumstock has mentioned, tonight's discussion, what we were looking for, because we do have parameters to meet for public notices and public hearings. So one of the things that we do is give ample notification to the public about the tax levy hearing. And so what we do is provide a working draft, which we've been doing since August... And so what we do is provide a working draft, which we've been doing since August. And the August presentation, this is the one that we're looking at now, pertains to the General Fund, pertains to Local Road Fund, and 911 Fund. So I think that those are the pieces that we were looking at tonight, just for some general direction, to see if there were any changes that we wanted to do for the property tax levy. There may be items, of course, as the discussion goes on tonight and through October and November, that the City Council may want to provide direction on different changes to the budget. But overall, we need direction so that we can move forward with a property tax process, which is the truth in taxation notice and publication, which we're in process now. So we're just looking for any particular changes right now, one way or another, to the property tax levy. And that's where our council direction discussion was right now. And I know that we're looking at all, a lot of pieces at one time, but this is what we're looking at for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Are there any other comments?
Thank you. I'm very comfortable with this budget. To Mr. Diastis's points, a reaction to what he's talking about with deficit spending would be lop off all of those capital projects. And those, in my opinion, are, with our capital projects, a lot of them are catching up, or at least, at the very least, holding the line on infrastructure, and I'm a big fan of that. The other thing is, this is one of those awkward positions we put staff in, in terms of that fund balance. You're looking at that fund balance going down, but if it was too high, I, as a resident, would complain that we have too much dough sitting around there, and so let's, let's spend it into that, into a comfortable range, which we are doing. When you look at the fund balance reserve at the end of the day, it's very adequate. And when I sat down and talked and looked at these numbers, I completely appreciate what we're doing and where we end up. Six years ago, story wasn't quite so rosy. We have, we have a different picture now, and I'm very comfortable with where this ends up for our 2018 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Alderman Diastis?
Thank you. I am, as I said, opposed to deficit spending, but I am particularly concerned about the Local Road Fund that's going to be down $464,000 at the end of next year. That's a negative number. The rest of the numbers are not negative. I'm on the Capital Improvements Committee, Rob, and I agree with you. We need to spend some money. I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I don't like that we're, that we're, this, this road fund is going to be down almost a half a million dollars at the end of next year. How are we going to make up for a half a million dollars? We're supposed to have a million dollar budget, and we're going to start off minus a half a million. That means in 19, we're only going to be able to spend a half a million. So we're falling a half a million dollars behind. I'm okay with the rest of it. I don't like deficit spending, and I have to say that. And I'm okay with 4.8. I am not okay with minus a half a million dollars in the road fund. I'm trying to get more money for the road fund, and this is saying, if we do this in 19, we'll have a half a million dollars less.
Go ahead, Mr. Bandier.
We might be answering that with the next set of questions, because a big chunk of that half a million dollars is that Kirchhoff Road project, should we decide to do that.
Right, I understand. So, we had that conversation.
Yeah.
And I told staff my feelings on it at that point. I don't want to spend money in 18 and then lose it in 19.
Well, I think to move ahead and maybe answer the questions for staff and to maybe answer your questions, let's go forward with B. Does the City Council approve this working draft for the fiscal year 2018 proposed budget? All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four opposed. Four approved, one against. Okay. Now C, are there any additions or deletions to the fiscal year 2018 proposed budget that the City Council wants to discuss and have struggle of time? Mrs. Gallagher, go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just want to interject. This question here today is, could continue into the next month, because we have more discussions, you have more review. So I, this was to look at what's going on now in terms of line items. If there was something you've been thinking about through our discussions and wanted to add, delete, or change, certainly let us know, and we can continue adding it to the list. And then if we need to recalculate numbers, that's something we can do. And so that's why this is here, to bring, you know, to signal early. And that's why I just want to clarify, it's not the final discussion on this, but we're putting this here. The next set of questions does pertain to local roads, so if you want to kind of...
Move it forward.
Yeah, sorry. Think, I just wanted to set that up. Thanks.
So C, are there any additions or deletions to the fiscal year 2018 proposed budget?
Oh, of course.
So, are we...
And then we can go to local road.
So then, okay. See, now that we're moving forward to local roads.
And I can move on from here and just kind of give a little background. So Local Road Fund, when we presented it in August, there was a larger negative fund balance position. There was direction given to staff to reevaluate the road fund, and what we did was look at that and see what particularly we could do to look at the expenditure side. And with that direction, we took careful consideration with the Public Works Department. And right now, as it sits, while there was discussion, $1 million from the August discussion with City Council, being the fact that we have $600,000 sitting in, available for, for road funds from MFT, we also have road fund available in the Local Road Fund. So all in, $1.5 million is what's sitting for the annual street program between both funds. That does bring the road fund to a negative 464,000, based on what's in there now with a $1.5 million program. We did defer the Kirchhoff Road median improvement program to a later date, and what we did was we moved the Kirchhoff Road portion, where it was sitting in other expenses in the road fund, we did move that to the annual street program. So that's what brings it to the 1.5. If the City Council desires, you can move that to a different year, but just to keep in mind, in the back of your mind, we're still waiting on Northwest, Northwest Conference, thank you, Municipal Conference, for information from them, whether or not that is to be funded. It's just something that we have had in the budget and we were planning for. If that's removed, that does bring it down to a zero fund balance and not a negative. We're just trying to look at what council direction is looking for and taking in mind what you've been talking about all this time. So that's where it sits right now, and we're turning it over back to you for further discussion.
Thank you, Melissa. So we're on letter A, the Local Road Fund does show a negative. So is there a discussion about what the City Council desires to do? Mr. Bandier.
I'm, on this particular one, not interested in doing the Kirchhoff project if it puts us in that negative 460-some thousand dollar position. So my vote is, get that out of there and, and end up with a zero balance. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Cannon.
Mr. Crumstock, could you answer a question for me? Because I'm not sure what the answer is on this. If we deferred to do the Kirchhoff thing, there's a possibility we won't get funding the next year, right?
That's correct, because if we defer it, we have to go back to Northwest Municipal Conference and ask them to put it. And that's why we're still waiting, obviously, for residents at home. And just reiterate, we had this program scheduled, and it's been moved a few times. And I know that I'm sort of speaking with Public Works Fred Vogt, the director, and he can actually talk about that. But that's one thing that Northwest Municipal Conference continues asking. Do you have it scheduled for the 2018 budget? We have told them it is in the budget, proposed budget at this point in time, but we would have, in a traditional year, we would have already known if this was scheduled for 2018 or 2019. Due to some changes with how the distribution of money is actually done, that's why they're actually having concern in how the reappropriation is going with each of the pieces. But I know that Public Works Director Fred Vogt is actually behind me, so he can elaborate in on a little bit more, but that's why we still have it in ours to show that it's there.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
The biggest problem that has been facing the Municipal Conference Council of Mayors the last several months with approving their 2018 program and beyond is the methodology changes that are required by the federal government and by the CMAP, Chicago Metropolitan Area for Planning, changes that are going to be made. And this conference, this area is subject to losing probably anywhere from $1 to $2 million a year, as compared to the $8 million that we've been getting. It may go down to six or seven. Of much concern is what happens between 2018 and 2020, when these new regulations and new benchmarks go into place. So the Conference of Mayors is trying to get clarification as to what their expenditure levels are for 2018, 2019, and 2020. We believe that they stay the same as they have, and the significant decrease in funding starts in 2021. But I do give caution to the, to the council here that, you know, if we put off that Kirchhoff Road project, even for a year, it may not be looked favorably and may throw us for that project back into the mix for other processes consideration. Because the Council of Mayors has been discussing reprioritizing locally three different types of projects. One, road resurfacings, which are, to some, considered maintenance. Secondly, street lighting projects. And third, bike path projects. So we may be okay if we defer it, but at this point, we've been, from staff standpoint, pushing it forward based on previous discussions that we've had here for 2018.
So, thank you, Mr. Vogt. Mr. Cannon, go ahead.
So I guess I want to complicate your life even more, Fred. I, you know, I heard Melissa say that we would like to defer the $200,000 for the median strip project.
Which we've already done in this proposed budget.
I know that. Here's why I'm complicating your life, because I think that's a mistake. And here's where I'm coming from. We go and repave Kirchhoff Road, and then the next year, start ripping up right in the middle of it, that whole area. I think that that's a major mistake, because we're going to damage the road somehow. And I just think, it just, it just, it's a weird construction program. We're going to go all the way around to play a section where we're going to rip it out, put all brand-new stuff down, and then the next year, we're going to go in and rip out all the old stuff and try to protect the old stuff that's brand-new. It just seems to be counterproductive to what would be normal process. An opinion I granted. I'm not saying I'm right. It just seems like we're really going after it a different fashion. And again, I apologize, I'm not saying I'm right and everybody else is wrong. It just seems really a weird way to go about doing it.
With all due respect, it has already complicated our life. Because of that discussion, we likely, if we didn't fund the median projects in 2018, would look to do the Kirchhoff Road resurfacing project just by doing removal and replacement of curb immediately adjacent to the roadway, and would just leave the rest of the existing, you know, trees and broken concrete and the like until a future year. It would make it a little bit difficult, but not something that we haven't already discussed, if we have to do it that way.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah, no, I'm good now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Veenbusch, sir.
You know, this, this is the budget, the way I look at it, and we don't know if they're going to get the half million. I said, put the half million in the budget, see if we get the money. If we don't get the money, don't spend it. And we understand that.
And the next meeting of the Conference Council of Mayors is tentatively scheduled for next Friday. They've already deferred it three times, so we're certainly hoping that by the end of the month that we will do that. Good answer?
Yes, Mr. Veenbusch.
Can I ask a question? Who attends that meeting for us?
It's actually, most of the time, Public Works Director Fred Vogt, and then sometimes, when he's unavailable, Assistant Public Works, Rob Horn, who's sitting in the back. So they do go to those meetings.
Okay, do you have, okay, do your best, that's all I'll say.
Well, they know about this project, and I know that certain people on this council know that we've been talking about Kirchhoff Road resurfacing for years.
And to make sure that they know that, we've indicated that previous discussions at Committee of the Holes have indicated that it's front and center, that we are interested in doing the project in 2018, if it's funded.
So, Mr. Cannon, yes, sir.
I'd like to ask another question, it's maybe a little bit off, but if we get to the end of the year and we find out we have a surplus of money that we're not expecting at the moment, is there even a slight possibility that might happen?
We have, in this proposed budget, we've done the items for revenue and all the expenditures. So again, I think the best answer that I would tell you is that where we think we're going in, do you see that? And it could go back to what we've done in the past, after the CAFER is released in June, if you want to have a discussion about a reallocation at that point in time, we can have that discussion. But again, this proposed budget that you see before you doesn't talk about the fire stations or any of those pieces. So what we look at, and I'm only using the General Fund at this point in time, that $9 million, which is in the parameters of the fund balance policy, does not take into account land acquisition or any of those kind of pieces. So my recommendation to the councils, and I understand what you're asking for, but I would say, and again, what Alderman Veenbusch stated, is we continue moving on with the proposed budget. If we know that Kirchhoff Road's not going to be put in there, then it would be, again, another item that we would potentially remove from the budget at that point in time, and then that would make that positive. And then during the CAFER discussion of June of 2018, we would have any reallocations or money in to allocate that at this point in time. I'm just a little leery with some of the other discussions that we're having until we have some of the other final pieces on land and some of the others before we start moving.
Fair enough. So let me ask you one other question relative to that, then. So is it my understanding, I'm kind of going off what Mr. Diastis said. So if we're looking ahead to 2019 budget, we're going to have $500,000 from basically the gas tax, and then we'll have this tax levy going forward that's $650,000 about. So are we saying that 2019 will have approximately, what, 1.1 million about?
What we're saying is, again, when we start working on the 2019 proposed budget, we will be evaluating all items. And obviously, the first thing that we would do on the property tax is reallocate the 430-some-a-thousand dollars from the bond that you see on that item. Then from there, we would look at any of the, let's say, any new bond issuance that we would have, and then we would be putting in a discussion with the City Council about how much do you want to put into local roads? How much do you have to make up for the pensions? So my answer is kind of vague, I know, but we first have to see what the actuarials are going to say with the pensions, and then how we first do that first reallocation before we do those other pieces. Now with that said, obviously, when we look at local roads and MFT, that's why we have two items, how much is MFT doing and how much are local roads, we would be reevaluating, how much can we actually do in local roads? And again, what has been brought up is, we would be looking at that deficit, but we would try to bring that back up too. And it all goes back into, how many more projects are we doing? How much in local roads with all the other pieces between electrical and curb and gutter, and between snow patrol and all those other kind of pieces? So the answer is, we evaluate that before we know exactly how much of the street program we would be doing, because there's a hypothetical that when you do some of the reallocation with the actuarials, then we have to look at some of those other pieces. So hypothetically, bond is part of it. So I don't want to get, say, yes, there is definitely, but we need to look at each of those pieces before we get back to the overall rendition of what a 2019 proposed budget's going to be.
Okay, well, I appreciate the hard work you and Melissa do on this. I know we're asking to be magicians, it's no easy task. But I guess the last comment I would make, I think, you know, in my position, is anything we can do to try to get money into the road fund? I'm not unique on my thought, but if there's anything we can do at all to try to get money into there, it's, we're kind of desperate in that one particular fund, in my opinion. So if anything we can do, I'd appreciate it. But again, thank you for your hard work on this.
Any other thoughts or comments? So what you're looking for, Mr. Crumstock and Melissa, is will the council go forward and have a negative fund balance or defer it?
And the other thing is, obviously, with this item, if the council wants to wait until the October Committee of the Hall, there's the potential that maybe Northwest Municipal Conference will have an answer to us, so we can come back and say... Municipal Conference will have an answer to us so we can come back and say what they said. We just wanted to be upfront with people because again, if the direction at this Committee of the Hall meeting is, no, you need to remove it, then we need to know that. And if it's deferred until we have what Northwest, we need to know that too.
Yes, Mr. Gallagher, sir.
And Mr. Crumstock, showing this, you know, negative 464,000, would that benefit us for the sake of Northwest Municipal Conference moving forward and seeing this as a sign of good faith and adjusting their funding and financing?
Yeah, the only thing that Northwest Municipal Conference is actually looking at in the proposed 2018 budget is the expense that it's actually a line item in our overall. They do not look at negative or positive.
Okay. So we can vote tonight to move forward, but it can be changed at a later date.
That is correct.
So let's do a straw vote then to move forward on the Kirchhoff Road. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, against. Two. You have direction at the moment. Item B, are there any other items that the city council wishes to discuss related to the local road fund? Seeing none, the final question is, are there any other changes or considerations that the city council wishes to discuss for the fiscal year 2018 proposed budget? Mr. Gallagher?
Not to belabor this issue, but will we make it a point to circle back in October about this negative 464 and see the status?
Yes, and what happens is, we're hoping, again, as Public Works Director Fred Vogt has mentioned, we were really hoping, and they've already done three deferrals, they have another meeting coming up in a short period of time, we're really hoping that they're going to give us an answer so then we can let you know the answer before we're sitting here. But if they do another deferral, then we're hoping by that Committee of the Hall meeting, and again, in a month, that we will have a definitive answer. I really don't want to be sitting here again and saying that I'm still waiting for Northwest Municipal Conference, but we wanted to put it out there and, you know, at this point in time, the direction is it's still in there, and it will be back on the Committee of the Hall.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. If nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Banjus made it, it's been second, so move.